Adrian in Brightfelder City Clerk, you're hereby directed to call a regular session of the City Council to be held on Monday, November 1st, 2021, at 6:30 PM in the historic Federal Building for the purpose of conducting such business that may properly come before the City Council.
Thank you. Good evening, and welcome to a regular session of the Dubuque City Council for November 1st, 2021. As a reminder to our participants, you can provide in-person input or virtual audio and written input during the sections of the agenda where public input is accepted. Input options during the live meeting include: In-person attendees may approach the podium when the mayor asks if there is any public input on the item they would like to speak to. Remote attendees can log into GoToMeeting using the login links, phone numbers, and access code that appear on the broadcast and livestream and posted on the front page of the meeting agenda. This option includes audio input and written chat input. If you are participating via computer, indicate which item you would like to speak to in the chat function, or note that you would like to speak during the appropriate section. If you are participating via phone, indicate which item you would like to speak to when phone lines are unmuted. All phone lines will be unmuted during the consent agenda, public hearings, and public input periods, and city staff will determine the speaking order of the participants. All comments, whether in-person or virtual, must be accompanied by a name and address. Additionally, written public input is accepted by contacting the City Council directly from the city's webpage at www.cityofdubuque.org/councilcontacts and through the City Clerk's Office email at ctyclerk@cityofdubuque.org. This information will be reiterated during the meeting. Attendance for the session is as follows: Mayor Buell.
Here.
Council members Kavanaugh.
Here.
Farber.
Here.
Jones.
Here.
Resnick.
Here.
Rousell.
Here.
Sprank.
Here.
City manager Van Milligan.
Here.
City attorney Brumwell.
Here.
Thank you. And I'd like to start by announcing two items that are going to be polled from tonight's meeting. First is consent item number 16, the pre-annexation agreement with ITC Midwest LLC and the Civic Center Advisory Commission appointment. Both of those will be polled from tonight's agenda. Mayor Buell, I will turn it back over to you for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Okay, thank you, Adrian. I would ask all who are able to please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, Adrian.
For presentations, we have the COVID-19 update.
Good evening, Mayor, City Council.
Evening.
My name is Mary Rose Corrigan, Public Health Specialist for the Health Services Department in the City of Dubuque. And I'm just gonna wait till we get queued up here with our virtual presentation component. So, just to look at our Epi curve since March 2020, you can see that now we are in our second highest peak of COVID-19 cases, which began in about mid-September. So, in the last seven days, these are how the positive cases break down by age group. And the 0- to 17-year-old age group continues to be the most prominent, as it has been in the last several weeks. Back in September, this age group only comprised 19% of the cases, as did the 18- to 29-year-olds. So, the 18- to 29-year-old group has declined somewhat, but the 0- to 17 has increased significantly. So, you can see here that pretty much the whole state is in high community transmission, meaning that we are above 100 cases per 100,000 population. We're at 402 per 100,000 population today. As a comparison, in the last part of September, we were at 189 per 100,000 population, and our seven-day average positivity rate is 11.1, and it was about 5% in the latter part of September. So, we've had 391 cases in the last seven days. So, the chart on your right there that shows the seven-day case mark will probably once again increase this Wednesday, when the state releases the seven days for the state. So, numbers are continuing to go up. This shows the month of October, and the gray lines are how many people are negative, and the dark blue is positive. And I show this to show that we are doing a significant amount of testing in the community, which is what we want to do so we know our true transmission rate. I think we're averaging about 250 tests per day. Weekends are a little bit less. And we continue to promote the self-test kits, which are available throughout the community at healthcare providers, the VNA, the County Health Department, a lot of other options. The schools are distributing them, and it's an easy kit to do at home, mail in, or drop off at a healthcare provider to get to the lab, and you get the results electronically. And this is particularly good for people who may not have symptoms or mild symptoms, may have had an exposure, but not very ill, or they don't need to see a doctor, those kinds of things. We continue working on booster vaccinations for the those 65 and older, those 18 and older in long-term care settings or with underlying medical conditions, and also those who live or work in high-risk settings. And that last category really includes a lot of people that have jobs that put them at risk, either through close contact at work or through the public with different So, this slide is a bit complicated, and it's because it is getting complicated as to who gets what booster, and when, and should they. And I don't mean for the public to be able to navigate this themselves, but it does demonstrate that as we go through this, if you're unsure of whether or not you should get a booster or eligible, call your healthcare provider or go to our website, and it's explained. You know, when in doubt, you can always ask the person giving the vaccinations if you qualify to. But it is becoming complicated, and it's probably gonna be more complicated once the 5- to 11-year-old population is approved. So, just a study that came out from, that was published by the CDC just a couple days ago, trying to get at is infection from having disease or natural immunity better or worse than vaccination. And so, this study looked at hospitalized patients, those that were unvaccinated and vaccinated, and found that unvaccinated people who had previous COVID infection were five times more likely to have a positive COVID test compared to vaccinated people. And that was among those hospitalized. So, it is a real specific study, but maybe it's starting to get at, you know, what is more effective. And what this all means is, basically, get your booster shot and get vaccinated, even though you may have had COVID-19 in the past year or so. When we look at the percent of total population of fully vaccinated in Dubuque counties, we are in the 50% to 69% range, which is towards the top, so Dubuque is doing well. And you can see that, according to the Iowa Department of Public Health, we have 57% of the population fully vaccinated, and that does include those age groups that aren't yet eligible. The CDC number is a little higher, 59%, and that's just, they differ slightly, just based on reporting times and when they get those numbers. So, where are we now? The FDA, as indicated here, has approved Moderna booster, J&amp;J Janssen booster, and Pfizer they had previously in September, and on October 26th last week, they gave EU Emergency Youth Authorization, or EUA, approval for children 5 to 11. And tomorrow, the CDC Advisory Committee on Immunization Practices will review that and determine whether they will recommend those vaccines for children 5 to 11, and then, if so, the CDC Director will sign off on it. We expect, we have ordered, as a county, Pfizer childhood doses and supplies that is somewhat different than the adult, and those are supposed to come in the next week or so. So, it probably will not be vaccinating children on Wednesday after, if the CDC does approve those vaccines, but it will roll out fairly quickly. And we've also ordered vaccine, a good supply for the November 15 allocation. So, we'll be ready to vaccinate children once that's approved. So, doctors' offices, retail pharmacies, our VNA continue to provide vaccines. The point of distribution at the Dubuque County Firefighters Association Training Center is ready and available for use if a vaccine provider, you know, needs more space to do more vaccines in a shorter amount of time. And then our VNA schedules twice a week walk-in clinics at their site down on Iowa Street. And we continue to run the Sleeves Up phone line for any citizen that needs information on how to navigate getting a vaccine or making an appointment online, and that's staffed by our city staff. And there's just the dates and times for the VNA outreach clinics. Oops. And that's what I have tonight of my presentation. I'd be happy to answer any questions you have.
Thank you, Mary Rose. Anyone have any questions? Yes, Ms. Farber?
Mary Rose, you mentioned the Sleeves Up phone line. How busy is that phone line?
Lately, I just did check with the staff this afternoon. It's been just a few calls a day. But, you know, they're worthwhile when they do call, they have really good questions, so we're happy to help those folks.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Mr. Kavanaugh?
Thank you. I have a couple, Mary Rose. Thanks for being here again. The vaccines for children, are we expecting, do you have any idea what that's gonna look like for, I mean, are we just gonna do kind of what we're doing right now, or are there gonna be clinics like we had when adults were first getting vaccinated? I'm just kinda curious what the plans are for that.
For the pediatric, the 5- to 11-year-olds, all the pediatric practices, family practices, healthcare provider are getting ready right now, and they are gonna do their patients, and they're working on scheduling, they will be scheduling those. Quite a, I think, from what I know, the retail pharmacies will be also offering it to children, so there will be a variety of outlets. We don't anticipate having to do special clinics. Some providers, like our VNA, are going to do, you know, children on separate days. You don't wanna mix up these vaccine doses or confuse anyone, so there will be some things like that, perhaps, where there's designated times for children.
Okay, thank you. Second question is, and I'm sorry if I just missed it, but the hospitalization information, I mean, are we still good from a capacity standpoint?
Right. I guess I put that in my written memo to you, but actually, over the past month, the hospital numbers have kept going up for inpatients. They're able to handle it. You know, we're giving the monoclonal antibody treatments, and we continue to meet with the hospitals weekly, bi-weekly, to do a check-in. So, not that their staff isn't stretched and tired, and not a lot of room for other things, but they're able to handle it.
Okay. And I'm sorry, Mr. Mayor, one more real quick one, if that's all right. So, technically speaking, I mean, with high transmission, numbers going up, hospitalizations going up, we shouldn't be changing a ton of behavior at this point, right? I mean, shouldn't we, because if I'm not mistaken, CDC recommendation is have masks on in groups and be careful and try to make sure that we're not spreading this around as best we can?
Absolutely. We should continue to use caution, especially in indoor settings, assuring that those settings have proper ventilation and aren't crowded, and allow for spacing, and that people are mask-wearing. There are breakthrough infections as immunity wanes and, you know, prior to people getting booster vaccinations, and also, you know, remembering that there are at least 20%, if not more, people that have not been vaccinated or infected. So, yeah, it's still high risk. Unfortunately, the number's still going up. There's not another category beyond high transmission, but we'd probably be in it if there was. So, people need to be careful, and even if you're vaccinated, take all those precautions.
Okay, thank you.
Anyone else? Mr. Resnick?
Thank you very much. So, back in the day, the MMR, I remember being vaccinated in the schools, and especially with equity concerns, about everybody getting the opportunity to get vaccinated. I haven't heard anybody, whether it's nationally, or statewide, or us, talk about in the schools. Is there a reason we're not in schools with these vaccine possibilities?
Well, Mr. Resnick, there is some discussion and offerings from vaccine providers to see if the schools want that option. There is some logistical hurdles in terms of waivers, permission, you know, you have to have parents sign off, so those forms have to go home and come back, and different things like that. So, as we work with the schools every week, we are seeing what they want to do, and there are some vaccine providers that are willing to do that if they want to do it.
Thank you. Is there a Plan B for equity concerns? I mean, because I could take my kids almost anywhere to get that, not everybody has the opportunity.
Right. One of our providers that focuses on that, the Crescent Community Health Center, is, you know, gonna be offering the pediatric vaccines and continues to do so. We are not doing as many outreach clinics. In the summer, we, in spring, we did a lot, because we had a lot of outdoor events, and there was just more events where a variety of people attended, and those are kind of diminished. So, and quite frankly, the number of people that got vaccinated at those outreach clinics was pretty low, sometimes in the single digits. So, we're making more walk-in appointments available through the VNA as much as we can. And if there, as we work with specific populations and groups, as they did when we first started vaccinating individuals, they reach out for us, to our team, and we make special accommodations or go to special places where those populations feel comfortable getting vaccinated.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Anyone else? Mary Rose, I know this has been a part of the discussion a little bit ago, but, you know, flu season's coming upon us, people are starting to be inside more, you know, as the weather gets colder. I would imagine with the high transmission rate going on right now, that that's a major concern with our medical community with flu season coming up.
Yeah, influenza season, you know, we dodged a bullet last year in that we hardly had any cases, and I, most people think that was due to all the shutdowns and mitigation we were doing. Whether that will happen this year and what kind of a flu strain or strains we get is yet to be determined. I don't believe we've had any cases yet. But, it is the most, it is the busiest time of the year for hospitals, no question. And they are often stretched just from influenza in normal years during certain times. And so, if we do end up with a significant influenza season, the hospitals will definitely be stretched. And the only, most of the COVID patients, and I'm not speaking entirely for the hospitals, but just based on our meetings and conversations with them, the stay is somewhat shorter than it has been. But for the unvaccinated people that are hospitalized, they can, their length of stay can be significantly longer than those who are vaccinated and have a breakthrough infection in the hospital. So, yes, it is a concern. We urge everybody to get influenza vaccines, they're widely available in the community or from your employer. All the healthcare providers give them. And, you know, that's what will, vaccination is the best defense against that influenza and the COVID-19. And once again, we know from, you know, years of experience, that sometimes you can still get influenza, even though you've been vaccinated. It may be a different strain, but we do know that the illness is much less and generally does not end up with hospitalization. So, it's similar to COVID. If you've been vaccinated, unfortunate to have a breakthrough infection, it's gonna be a lot less severe.
And it'd probably be good advice for people, you know, that feel like they're, you know, they've got immune issues, whatever it may be, that now that people are being indoors more, it probably wouldn't be a bad idea for those folks to be wearing a mask when they go out someplace. That still provides protection, especially during the, you know, the fall and the winter that's coming up.
Yeah, absolutely. And one thing to remember, that there, the COVID-19 virus does not really have seasonality to it like the influenza virus. However, in climates like ours, when we are gonna be indoors more, that's where the risk comes in with transmission.
Okay. No other questions? Mr. Mayor? Mr. Jerome?
So, if you don't like being sick, washing your hands a lot, and wearing a mask when you're around a lot of other people are still probably good ideas in the face of COVID or in the face of influenza.
Absolutely. And the common cold, I may add.
Yeah. Which is a coronavirus. Ding.
Yes. It is.
Oh, you're confusing me. Okay, no other questions? Thank you, Mary Rose, for that update. Thank you.
Our second, our second presentation is the 2021 Woman of the Year Award.
Hi.
Hi.
I'm Amy Gilligan. I'm Executive Editor of The Telegraph Herald. And on behalf of The Telegraph Herald and her magazine, we had the honor a few weeks ago to present our Salute to Women Awards. And the most prestigious of those awards was given to a city employee, which is what brings me here tonight. We present the Woman of the Year Award to a woman who has distinguished herself in her career and in her community. She represents the best of who we are as women and as leaders. We've prepared a video that will help tell the story of this worthy recipient, and I'd like to show that now.
Mary Rose's character, she's really one of those iconic women leaders that the rest of us live up to. She's strong and determined, she's persistent, she knows what she wants, how to get it, and she works very hard to achieve it.
In the week of St. Patrick's Day in 2020, when the World Health Organization announced that there was a global pandemic, I don't think anyone imagined, at least of all Mary Rose Corrigan, that she would become the face of the pandemic in our community. Mary Rose Corrigan provided what is considered to be the most essential element of crisis management. Mary Rose Corrigan was the clear communicator, the clear and trustworthy communicator to all of us. And it wasn't just occasionally, it was every day. That is her impact. But also, I have to add, the Crescent Community Health Center and the Childhood Lead Poisoning Prevention Program. So, Mary Rose isn't new to being a strong and intelligent woman in the community. It's been her life.
She takes great pride in the Dubuque community and really is committed and passionate about making this a healthier and just more lively and vibrant place to live and work and play.
Well, you know, two things have happened now with Mary Rose during this pandemic year. Mary Rose is receiving this prestigious award. Mary Rose also had a hole in one this year. So, I expect in the future, she's gonna continue to golf with her husband Gus and her two sons, and she'll continue to contribute to the communities in ways we haven't yet imagined.
She's gonna continue to advocate, she's gonna continue to inform and participate in ways, continuing to volunteer, participate at the college and university level to help, you know, push forward the initiatives for students who are going into public health, and who knows, maybe even becoming an elected official.
On a personal note, I would add that I have been at The Telegraph Herald for more than 31 years, and there aren't very many sources that I can say I have worked with that entire time. So, perhaps we are cut something of the same cloth, but I'm proud to be here tonight to give our Woman of the Year Award to Mary Rose Corrigan.
It's been a pleasure working with The Telegraph over this COVID-19 pandemic. They've been a great way for us to get our message out into the community. And I just want to say that I have a great team in the Health Services Department, with the city staff, with you all, our community partners, and the incident management team that have really pulled together to manage this issue the best we could, and, you know, also our other public health initiatives too. So, I appreciate your support, and it's been a community effort. So, thank you very much.
Mary Rose, that, of all those awards that you may have received, I think this is the most significant, and the entire city, I think, feels the same way about your winning that award, so. Congratulations. Okay, Adrian?
Our next presentation is the Iowa Society of Solid Waste Operations Awards.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. My name is Jennifer Jordan, I'm from Iowa City, and I'm here on behalf of the Iowa Society of Solid Waste Operations, or ISOSO. I'm here to present an award this evening to a city employee also. We don't have the video in place yet, that'll be in the spring, but that was great, thank you. So, ISOSO is the Professional Trade Association for Trash and Recycling in Iowa, and every year, we recognize premier facilities, projects, programs, and individuals. Doug Hughes is being recognized this year as the outstanding professional, for his outstanding professional achievement in service to the industry. Doug is the Facility Supervisor for the Dubuque Metropolitan Area Solid Waste Agency. He's dedicated to the solid waste industry, and he has over a decade of experience here in Dubuque. His previous experience at the Adair County Landfill and Recycling Center, and at the Cass County Balefill and Recycling Center, so all over the state of Iowa with multiple different operations. He served on the Board of ISOSO and has been regularly involved with Iowa Recycling Association. He's known and respected for his desire to seek out and implement new and better processes. Doug believes in clear, straight communication and in doing the right thing. Doug believes landfills are more than just a hole in the ground, and that they're deserving of critical attention with outside-the-box-forward type thinking, which Dubuque is known for. Doug is a key component of Dubuque team and respected by not only his local team here at the landfill, but by peers across the state of Iowa. He's the type of person who wants to do the right thing for the right reason, without accolades, he's getting them anyway, and he's so deserving of this award. The actual award was actually presented at the conference that occurred in October of this year, and I'm not sure if we have that. We do! Great, thank you. We do have that. So, we'll be presenting Doug. Would you like to come up? We'll be re-presenting it this evening. Doug, thank you very much for all your services in the industry.
Thank you. Thank you. This is more of a award for the whole landfill, I feel. It takes a team to do it, it takes a team to get to this point, and I feel like we have a great team at the landfill. Thank you. This is more of a word for the whole landfill, I feel. It, it takes a team to do it. It takes a team to get to this point, and I feel like we have a great team at the landfill. We've got a great team for our board, and we have a great city staff that supports us too. So I'd just like to say thanks.
Thank you, Doug, and congratulations. I, I know it takes a team, but it takes a strong leader to, to make that happen. So congratulations.
Okay, Adrian.
Next presentation is the 2021 National Service Recognition Day Awards.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and City Council. My name is Heather Satterly, and I am the AmeriCorps Director for the City of Dubuque. I'm here tonight to share the nominees and the award recipients for the National Service Recognition Day Award Ceremony that took place on October 5th of 2021. I do have a presentation for you all. Do I do that? Okay. Well, we're going to go without it because I can't locate it right now. But that is okay, because I have all of the things I wanted to say available to you. Okay, so the National Service Recognition Day is usually celebrated on the first Tuesday in April, but this year...
National service members in Dubuque serve in various capacities designed to strengthen education, fight poverty, rebuild after disasters, provide health service, engage residents, and preserve the environment. Annually, the Dubuque National Service Partnership members and community volunteers serve more than 50,000 hours each year. Let us all pledge to do our part to strengthen our community through service, volunteering, and civic engagement. I invite you to join me now in recognizing the significant impact these national service members have had and continue to have on the overall strength of our community. Let's give them all a big hand. Thank you.
So a little bit about National Service Recognition Day. National Service Recognition Day is a nationwide bipartisan effort to recognize the positive impacts of national service and to thank those who serve, and to encourage more citizens and community members to give back to their communities. This day is sponsored by AmeriCorps, the agency, which is formerly known as the Corporation for National and Community Service, the National League of Cities, and the National Association of Counties and Cities of Service. Here in Dubuque, the national, the Dubuque National Service Partnership, so DNSP, is a collaborative effort of the Corporation for National and Community Service Programs, so AmeriCorps programs. And here in Dubuque, that consists of RSVP of Dubuque County, which is an AmeriCorps seniors program, United Way of the Dubuque Area Tristates, and the City of Dubuque AmeriCorps program. We partner to host the National Day of Service, to raise awareness about volunteerism, and to share training opportunities, as well as to celebrate volunteerism and all the great things that service members do. So this year, we had three award categories that we presented. The Volunteer Service Impact Award, which is a new addition to our, our lineup of that ceremony. It recognizes individuals who serve as volunteers in the community, whose service has, have made a positive impact and a significant impact on the organizations for which they have or do currently serve for. This Personal Impact Award is designed to award those community members who have demonstrated commitment to volunteerism within their agency, and this person may have demonstrated exemplary leadership, creativity, cooperation, and hard work for their service to others. So the three nominees for the Volunteer Service Impact Award were Jack Frick. He was nominated by Carol Loachter and Keith Niles for his 41 years of service to the Dubuque Arboretum and Botanical Gardens. Mary Ann Konzit was nominated by Abbe Rual, the fellow, a fellow board member at the Multicultural Family Center. She was nominated for her four years of service to the Multicultural Family Center, as well as many other years of service to other Dubuque initiatives. And then Laura Fipell was nominated by Holly Schmidt for her five years of service to the Dubuque Regional Humane Society. The award recipient for the Volunteer Service Impact Award was Laura Fipell. Laura began her volunteer service with the Dubuque Regional Humane Society in August 2016. In her daily routine, she assists in leading walking crews for morning exercise and enrichment for canines. She then also assists in adoption, meet-and-greets, dog introductions, kennel care, and enrichment, and so much more. She's actually somebody who helped me adopt my recent dog, so really love her. Laura always jumps in wherever she's needed and has a way of uplifting any environment. In October 2018, Laura graciously opened up her home to dogs that needed additional care in foster homes, and she's been a foster mom for puppies and several dogs that need extensive socialization or medical needs. Because of Laura's continual efforts to our no-kill animals resource center and shelter, 1,190 cats and dogs have been transported to the Dubuque Regional Humane Society, and Laura's dedication to the mission of the Dubuque Regional Humane Society shows through her completion of over 100 service hours each month. Laura devotes her time to the shelter almost daily and several times a day. And then if a need arises, she's always just a phone call away, no matter what time of day. So I don't believe that. We have Laura with us tonight, but congratulations to Laura for that award. The next award that we had was the National Service Impact Award, which recognizes alumni or current national service members who have made a significant impact on the organizations or communities of which they serve. This Personal Impact Award is designed to award national service members who have made a commitment to public service by helping with special projects within the agency of which they are hosted. Again, this person may have demonstrated exemplary leadership, creativity, and cooperation in their service. The nominees were Alexis Farrell, who is nominated by Michaela Freiberger for her 2020 to 2021 Green Iowa AmeriCorps service. Janet Grass was nominated by the City of Dubuque AmeriCorps program for her four terms of service as a literacy tutor at Hoover Elementary. Linda Sorensen was nominated by the City of Dubuque AmeriCorps program for her four terms of service at Eisenhower Elementary. Mary K. Patterson was nominated by the City of Dubuque AmeriCorps program for her four terms of service as a literacy tutor at Kennedy Elementary. And finally, Tessie Strom was nominated by the Multicultural Family Center for her four terms of service with the City of Dubuque AmeriCorps program since summer 2019. And the winner of the National Service Impact Award was Tessie Strom. Tessie has served with AmeriCorps at the Multicultural Family Center since summer of 2019, coming back for summer 2020, and has served full-time with the center since September 2020, and is currently in her fourth and final service term with AmeriCorps, which is full-time, and she will be with us through August 2022. During her service, Tessie has worked specifically with teenagers. The teens we serve at the MFC are typically at-risk, marginalized, and under-resourced. The demographics, on average, are 70% teens of color, 84% qualify for free and reduced meals, and the majority of teens either walk or take the bus to attend our programs and come from single-family households. Tessie is very accepting of the teens and of who they are, and she understands the impact that her service has had on the lives of these teens. As a caring adult, she understands the responsibility in how she presents herself, her behavior, and how she treats others. She knows that teens are impressionable and that her actions matter. Tessie is here with us tonight, so I will ask her to stand. And she, she, she didn't want to say anything, and I didn't want to make her, so. Thank you, Tessie. And then our final Champion of Service Award, which is, our final award is the Champion of Service Award, which recognizes individuals or agencies that support the national service programs. This individual or occasionally agency will have demonstrated ongoing support and sustained involvement with the national service members. So we do have our Champion of Service from 2020, which we didn't get to have our award ceremony. The winner of the Champion of Service Award for 2020 was Kim Stickney. Kim Stickney served as the AmeriCorps Assistant for the City of Dubuque's AmeriCorps program for 12 years, as well as being an AmeriCorps member previous to that. Kim gave so much of herself to make the program, program a success, and she was the quiet behind-the-scenes person, making sure that all the i's were dotted and the t's were crossed. She would have had this presentation up and ready to go and all that. Kim was the embodiment of what it meant to serve. She never asked for acknowledgement, mostly because she didn't want it, and she was never expected a thank you while she deserved so many. So Kim retired from the City of Dubuque program on Saturday, July 25, 2020, and we hope she's having a great retirement. And then finally, we have the Champion of Service Award for 2021, and I'm pleased to announce that that person is also in this room, Mayor Roy D. Buell. Mayor Buell is the longest-serving mayor in Dubuque's history, beginning in November 2005. Since his election, he has been an enthusiastic supporter of AmeriCorps and national service programs operating within the Dubuque community. Mayor Buell has been supported, supportive of the city sponsorship of the City of Dubuque AmeriCorps program and community volunteerism. Seeing the great need for student success, Mayor Buell prioritized the campaign for grade-level reading, allowing the city's AmeriCorps program to pivot towards that community priority. Additionally, when necessary, Mayor Buell has always advocated for the funding of national service at the federal level and sharing the detailed impacts of AmeriCorps program, programming in Dubuque since AmeriCorps inception in 1994. He's also gotten on the floor and helped tutor some children, you know, a couple times, so that's a big, a big commitment. So on behalf of the Dubuque National Service Partnership, I want to say thank you, Mayor Buell, for your support of national service for all these years, to Tessie, Laura, and all of the nominees, and Kim as well, so.
Thank you very much, Heather. And you know, because I've spoken with you many times about AmeriCorps and, and national service folks, that they do some of the most, I think, profound work with, with people and communities around this country. And, you know, many of them, you don't get paid a lot, and they put a lot of effort and time into it. And we're just so appreciative of, of what they've done in our school system and with, you know, our other folks that need that help. And I can't think of a better organization, you know, to tout or to talk about and congratulate. And certainly, the award winners every year are so very deserving. And, you know, for every one of those awards, there's 20 people in the background that have helped just the same way. So thank you to all, all of those volunteers, and thank you for the, the award. Certainly unexpected, as, as you know. Thank you.
Okay, Adrian.
We'll move on to proclamations. Our first proclamation is Extra Mile Day.
Okay, and I understand you're going to accept this proclamation. Did you want to speak to it at all, foreign?
Well, I just thought that I would accept it on behalf of all of the nominees and award recipients. Those are all individuals who have gone the extra mile for our community.
Okay. Well, thank you again, Heather, for being here to accept this proclamation. City of Dubuque Proclamation. Whereas Dubuque, Iowa is a community which acknowledges that a special vibrancy exists within the entire community when its individual citizens collectively go the extra mile in personal effort, volunteerism, and service. And whereas Dubuque, Iowa is a community which encourages its citizens to maximize their personal contribution to the community by giving of themselves wholeheartedly and with total effort, commitment, and conviction to their individual ambitions, family, friends, and community. And whereas Dubuque, Iowa is a community which chooses to shine a light on and celebrate individuals and organizations within its community who go the extra mile in order to make a difference and lift up fellow members of their community. And whereas the City of Dubuque acknowledges the mission of Extra Mile America to create 550 extra-mile cities in America, and is proud to support Extra Mile Day on November 1, 2021. Now therefore, I, Roy D. Buell, Mayor of the City of Dubuque, Iowa, on behalf of the city council, staff, and citizens of Dubuque, hereby proclaim the first day of, of November 2021 as Extra Mile Day in the City of Dubuque, Iowa, and urge every individual in the community to take time on this day to not only go the extra mile in his or her own life, but to also acknowledge all who are inspirational in their efforts and commitment to make their organizations, families, community, country, and the world a better place.
Okay, and our next proclamation is Philanthropy Day. I believe, Crystal?
Good evening, Mayor, City Council, and guests. So I am Crystal Tetro. I have the pleasure of being this year's Chair of the National Philanthropy Day Celebration here in our community. So each year, donors and philanthropists make an incredible difference in our community by supporting the work of many diverse nonprofits that address all aspects of life, from health and education, to arts and conservation, to food services and childcare. This has been especially evident over these past two difficult years. We are very fortunate to live in such a generous community. National Philanthropy Day is an opportunity to celebrate how so many give back to make our community a better place to live for all of us, and also to publicly recognize some of the outstanding individuals and organizations who have changed our local community with a giving heart. This year's National Philanthropy Day Celebration and Awards Luncheon is on Tuesday, November 16, at the Grand River Center. All are welcome to attend, and tickets are available online at afpgts.org. This event is hosted by our local tri-state chapter of the Association of Fundraising Professionals, of which I am a member. We are a group of about 50 people working at nonprofits throughout the community and the tri-state area as either professional or volunteer fundraisers. So thank you once again for recognizing National Philanthropy Day.
Thank you, Crystal, for being here this evening to accept this proclamation. City of Dubuque Proclamation. Whereas philanthropic organizations are responsible for enhancing the quality of life for people, and whereas in recognition of the role played by the uniquely American tradition of philanthropy, the United States Congress has designated November 15 as National Philanthropy Day. And whereas voluntary associations formed to address societal needs are an integral part of American society. And whereas the history of American philanthropy is filled with the names of the founding fathers and mothers, whose efforts spawned hospitals, free public libraries, homes for widows and orphans, and volunteer fire departments, to name a few. And whereas Americans annually contribute billions of dollars to many worthwhile charities. And whereas today, the nonprofit sector affects nearly every citizen in many ways through educational and religious organizations, museums and universities, shelters for the homeless, and clubs that enrich their youth, and social service agencies that provide food, clothing, housing, training, and help for the indigent. Now therefore, I, Roy D. Buell, Mayor of the City of Dubuque, Iowa, on behalf of the city council, staff, and citizens of Dubuque, hereby proclaim November 15, 2021, as Philanthropy Day in the City of Dubuque, and urge all people to recognize the tradition of American philanthropy as it continues to improve and enhance the lives of all by promoting the common good.
Thank you very much, Crystal. Thank you. Okay, and our final proclamation this evening is Hospice Month.
Good evening. My name is Levon Knoll, and I'm the--
My name is Levon Knoll, and I'm Executive Director of Hospice of Dubuque. I would like to thank the mayor and the council for taking the time this evening to proclaim November as National Hospice Month. This proclamation serves as an opportunity to raise awareness regarding hospice care so community members know where to turn for help when they or a loved one are facing life-limiting illness. Hospice of Dubuque is the only local nonprofit hospice. Our professional staff and our selfless volunteers have served the greater Dubuque area since 1983. No one likes to think about the last chapter of life, and yet it's something each of us will eventually face. The goals of hospice care are quality of life, comfort, dignity, and hope. The community can take comfort in knowing that we at Hospice of Dubuque are your neighbors and your friends and your family members, and we're here to serve you in your time of need. We bring life-honoring care to you and your family wherever you call home. Hospice of Dubuque is your hometown hospice, and we are always here for you. And thank you so much for your support through the years. I miss seeing all of you last year, so it's just wonderful to be here and to celebrate National Hospice Month.
Believe me, we miss seeing all of you, too. So thank you for being here this evening to accept this proclamation. City of Dubuque Proclamation. Whereas Hospice of Dubuque is the only local nonprofit hospice serving the greater Dubuque area since 1983. And whereas Hospice of Dubuque's team of healthcare professionals and dedicated volunteers are your tri-state neighbors who have provided this life-honoring care for over 38 years. And whereas Hospice of Dubuque provides a service that comes to you in your time of need in the place you call home, in hometowns and rural areas throughout our tri-state area. And whereas Hospice of Dubuque's care is individualized, focused on patient goals and support for family members, and this care brings hope, comfort, dignity, and quality of life. Now therefore, I, Roy D. Buell, Mayor of the City of Dubuque, Iowa, on behalf of the City Council, staff, and citizens of Dubuque, hereby proclaim the month of November 2021 as Hospice Month in the City of Dubuque, Iowa. Thank you very much. Thank you. Thank you very much. Okay, Adrian.
We will move on to consent items. At this time, anyone participating in the meeting in person who would like to discuss one of the consent items, please approach the podium when the mayor asks if there is any in-person input and state your name and address. For all remote attendees, please enter your name and address in the chat function or state your name and address over the phone when the mayor asks if there is any virtual input. If more than one participant would like to speak, then city staff will determine the speaking order of the participants. Please state the item you would like removed from the consent agenda for separate discussion and consideration. Consent items can be found on pages 2 through 6 of the agenda, and just a reminder that consent item number 16 is no longer part of tonight's meeting.
Okay, thank you, Adrian. Is there anyone in the chambers who would like anything on the consent agenda held for separate discussion? Seeing no one, do we have any one virtually who would like anything else?
We do not have any comments in the GoToMeeting chat, and I have unmuted our phone participants as well.
And the city clerk has not received any emails.
Okay, thank you very much. I'll bring it back to the table then for any discussion.
Mayor?
Mr. Resnick.
Yes, I move to receive and file the documents, adopt the resolutions, and deal with the consent items as recommended, except for number 16.
Second by Sprank.
Motion by Mr. Resnick, second by Mr. Sprank. Adrian, would you call the roll, please?
Kavanaugh?
Aye.
Rousell?
Aye.
Sprank?
Aye.
Farber?
Aye.
Resnick?
Aye.
Buell?
Aye.
Jones?
Aye.
That motion carries seven zero.
We'll move on to items set for public hearing. We have two. First is B Branch Gate and Pump Replacement Project, and second is Request to Set for Public Hearing Proposed Lease Agreement between the City of Dubuque and Kamalek Internet Services, both for November 15, 2021.
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Resnick.
Yes, I move to receive and file, adopt the resolutions, and set the public hearing for November 15, 2021.
Second by Farber.
Second by Mr. Resnick, second by Ms. Farber. Adrian, would you call the roll, please?
Kavanaugh?
Aye.
Rousell?
Aye.
Sprank?
Aye.
Farber?
Aye.
Resnick?
Aye.
Buell?
Aye.
Jones?
Aye.
That motion carries seven zero. It will be held in the council chambers on the dates and the times indicated.
We will move on to boards and commissions. We have applicant review for the Resilient Community Advisory Commission and appointments for the Civil Service Commission, Investment Oversight Advisory Commission, and the Transit Advisory Board. Just a reminder that the Civic Center Advisory Commission appointment is removed from the agenda.
Okay, is there anyone in the chambers to address the application of Catherine Conley for the Resilient Community Advisory Commission?
I am.
Okay, go ahead, please.
I just wanted to take an opportunity to introduce myself. My name is Catherine Conley, and I, of course, live here in Dubuque, Iowa. I work at Medical Associates as a physical therapist assistant. Just a little bit of background, I grew up on an organic dairy farm where I really started to get a good idea of what sustainable living and really kind of developed a passion for, you know, taking care of the environment and living sustainably. So right now, I'm pursuing my master's at George Washington University, and I've really started to broaden my focus and really increased my passion for community resilience and adaptability. So when I saw that there was a vacancy on this board, I became really excited because I'd love to be a part of helping Dubuque be a more resilient and adaptable community. And that's it. Thank you.
Thank you for your application, Catherine. Okay, we'll move on then to the appointments. The first is a mayor's appointment to the Civil Service Commission, and I would ask for council concurrence to reappoint Daniel White to that position. Okay, thank you very much. Next is the Investment Oversight Advisory Commission. We have one opening and one applicant.
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Jones.
I move that Molly Velasquez be appointed to the three-year term through July 1, 2024 on the Investment Oversight Advisory Commission.
Second by Rousell.
Motion by Mr. Jones, second by Ms. Rousell. Adrian, would you call the roll, please?
Kavanaugh?
Aye.
Rousell?
Aye.
Sprank?
Aye.
Farber?
Aye.
Resnick?
Aye.
Buell?
Aye.
Jones?
Aye.
That motion carries seven zero. Molly Velasquez is appointed to a three-year term through July 1, 2024 on the Investment Oversight Advisory Commission. Next is the Transit Advisory Board. We have, well, let's take these openings one at a time because there's different dates. So we've got one three-year term through July 30, 2023. Adrian, would you call the roll and ask each council member to select one of the three applicants?
Kavanaugh?
Greg Orwal.
Rousell?
Greg Orwal.
Sprank?
Greg Orwal.
Farber?
Greg Orwal.
Resnick?
Greg Orwal.
Greg Orwal.
Jones?
Greg Orwal.
Okay, Greg Orwal is appointed to a three-year term through July 30, 2023 on the Transit Advisory Board. Next, one of the two remainder, each council member should select one of those for the three-year term through July 30, 2024. Adrian, would you call the roll, please?
Kavanaugh?
Matthew Esser.
Rousell?
Matthew Esser.
Sprank?
Matthew Esser.
Farber?
Matthew Esser.
Resnick?
Matthew Esser.
Buell?
Matthew Esser.
Jones?
Matthew Esser.
Matthew Esser is appointed to a three-year term through July 30, 2024 on the Transit Advisory Board.
We will move on to public hearings. At this time, anyone participating in the meeting in person who would like to discuss one of the public hearing items, please plan to approach the podium when the mayor asks if there is any in-person input for the public hearing you would like to speak to. For all remote attendees, please enter your name and address in the chat function and state your question, or state your name and address over the phone when the mayor asks if there is any virtual input for the public hearing you would like to speak to. If more than one participant would like to speak, then city staff will determine the speaking order of the participants. Public hearing number one is City of Dubuque Voluntary Annexation Request.
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Kavanaugh?
I move to receive and file and adopt the resolution.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Kavanaugh, second by Mr. Jones. Mike, please.
Thank you. City Manager Mike Van Milligan. Planning Services Manager Wally Wernemont recommends city council approval of a 100% voluntary annexation request filed by the City of Dubuque for approximately 51.56 acres of property. The annexation territory is comprised of the western on-and-off ramps of the intersection of the southwest arterial and U.S. Highway 15161 and the intersection of Tamarack Drive and the southwest arterial. The 51.56-acre annexation territory provides connection to the City of Dubuque Corporate Limits for 156.25-acre property owned by River City Development Group LLC. River City Development Group LLC has filed a 100% voluntary annexation with the city council. I concur with the recommendation and respectfully request mayor and city council approval.
Thank you, Mike. We are in a public hearing to consider city council approval of a 100% voluntary annexation request filed by the City of Dubuque for approximately 51.56 acres of property. Is there anyone in the chambers to address us on this? Seeing no one, do we have any virtual comments?
There are no submitted comments, and our phone participants are unmuted.
And the city clerk has not received any emails for this item.
Okay, thank you. We'll bring it back to the table for any discussion. Seeing none, Adrian, would you call the roll, please?
Kavanaugh?
Aye.
Rousell?
Aye.
Sprank?
Aye.
Farber?
Aye.
Resnick?
Aye.
Buell?
Aye.
Jones?
Aye.
That motion carries seven zero.
Public hearing number two is River City Development Group LLC Voluntary Annexation.
Mayor?
Mr. Kavanaugh?
I move to receive and file and adopt the resolution.
Second by Mr. Sprank.
Motion by Mr. Kavanaugh, second by Mr. Sprank. Mike, please.
And I've lost my computer connection, so we're just going to have to give me a second to get it up on my iPad.
We'll play the Jeopardy music for a couple minutes.
Sorry about that.
That's okay.
I just came back.
Yours just came back?
It did.
Mine just came up, too.
Just thinking about it. Technology is great when it works.
Right.
Oh, I think maybe I got it. Thank you. Nope, I take it back. City Manager Mike Van Milligan. Planning Services Manager Wally Wernemont recommends city council approval of a 100% voluntary annexation request filed by River City Development Group LLC for approximately 156.25 acres of property. The annexation territory is located west of the southwest arterial and north of Tamarack Business Park. To make connection to the corporate limits of Dubuque, the City of Dubuque is concurrently requesting annexation of 51.56 acre territory that is comprised of the western on-and-off ramps of the intersection of the southwest arterial and U.S. Highway 15161 and the intersection of Tamarack Drive and the southwest arterial. I concur with the recommendation and respectfully request mayor and city council approval.
Thank you, Mike. We are in a public hearing to consider city council approval of a 100% voluntary annexation request filed by River City Development Group LLC for approximately 156.25 acres of property. Is there anyone in the chambers to address us on this? Seeing no one, do we have any virtual comments?
You do not. I'm the second.
Okay.
And Mr. Mayor, the city clerk has received public input via email from two individuals today. First was Jack McCullough of Tamarack Property Owners Association, and second was Kevin Dragato of 9900 Military Road. Both input was forwarded to city council. Some of the input was related to actions that council may take at a future date such as rezoning, and that input would also be provided at that public hearing for the rezoning.
Okay, thank you. Okay, I'll bring it back to the table then for any discussion. Seeing none, Adrian, would you call the roll, please?
Kavanaugh?
Aye.
Rousell?
Aye.
Sprank?
Aye.
Farber?
Aye.
Resnick?
Aye.
Buell?
Aye.
Jones?
Aye.
That carries seven zero.
Public hearing number three is Second Amendment to Lease Agreement between the City of Dubuque and Iowa Greyhound Association.
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Jones?
I move to receive and file the documents and adopt the resolution.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Jones, second by Mr. Kavanaugh. Mike, please.
Thank you. City Manager Mike Van Milligan. City Attorney Colonel Brumwell recommends city council approval of the Second Amendment to the lease agreement between the City of Dubuque and the Iowa Greyhound Association, which modifies the end date of the lease from December 31, 2025 to July 31, 2022. I concur with the recommendation and respectfully request mayor and city council approval.
Thank you, Mike. We are in a public hearing to consider city council approval of the Second Amendment to a lease agreement between the City of Dubuque and the Iowa Greyhound Association, which modifies the end date of the lease from December 31, 2025 to July 31, 2022. Is there anyone in the chambers to address us on this? Do we have any virtual input?
There is none.
Okay.
And no emails.
Okay, I'll bring it back to the table for any discussion.
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Resnick, please.
Yes, Mr. City Manager, please. Could you maybe talk a little bit, perhaps, to the public about what are next steps? What are the possibilities for the Greyhound Park? It's something that's important to the entire community.
Yes, thank you, Councilmember Resnick. So the Iowa Greyhound Association had been leasing the track to perform dog racing for the last few years, six years, I believe it was, and also the dog kennel structures housed the animals. And they have decided that they're, and they had this current extension of the lease, which was for five years, and they've decided instead to end their racing here at Dubuque Greyhound Park early. And so that's why the lease is being amended. Once the amendment takes place next year, then the city regains full control of the property. And the mayor and city council have adopted a master plan for Schmidt Island, and that master plan does encompass and incorporate this property that, if it ever did become available through the end of dog racing, that there are other opportunities for redevelopment. And so the mayor and council has appointed a citizen committee chaired by former city council member Kevin Lynch, who works on implementation of the master plan with the city, with the Dubuque Racing Association, with other interested parties on the island and off the island. And so now that this land will become available sooner than expected, we certainly will look at what the opportunities are for redevelopment and on what kind of schedule.
I see, thank you. With all this pre-work being done, this doesn't throw anybody off by how sudden this is going to happen. We'll still have plenty of great opportunities to make some choices.
Yes, and actually, the timing is pretty good because what we're finding out is coming out of the pandemic is that people are looking for a lot more entertainment options, and so the Dubuque Racing Association and Acue Casino have benefited from that. And while we love Jesus Velis and we appreciate all he did for the Dubuque Racing Association and Acue Casino, he did retire this last year, and he was replaced by, through a national search, by Alex Dixon. And Alex has quite a background in the gaming industry, but he also has quite a background in investment banking, which is how he started his career. And Alex has quite a background in the gaming industry, but he also has quite a background in investment banking, which is how he started his career. And he's excited about the opportunities to work on redevelopment on Schmidt Island. So the fact that this property becomes available sooner than expected, I think, will be a great benefit to the community and the development plans for Schmidt Island.
Thank you very much. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Any other discussion? Okay, the motion is to receive and file and adopt the resolution. Adrian, what you call the roll, please?
Kavanaugh.
Aye.
Rousell.
Aye.
Sprank.
Aye.
Farber.
Aye.
Resnick.
Aye.
Buell.
Aye.
Jones.
Aye.
That motion carries seven zero.
Public hearing number four is Resolution of Adoption for the Amended and Restated Urban Renewal Plan for the Dubuque Industrial Center Economic Development District Urban Renewal Plan, version 2021.6.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Rousell.
I move to receive and file and adopt the resolution.
Second by Farber.
Motion by Ms. Rousell, second by Ms. Farber. Mike, please.
Thank you. City manager Mike Van Milligan. Economic development director Jill Connors recommends city council approval of the joint agreement between the City of Dubuque and Dubuque County and approval of the resolution of adoption for the amended and restated urban renewal plan for the Dubuque Industrial Center Economic Development District, version 2021.6. The proposed amended and restated urban renewal plan for the district will expand the district to include property to be designated as a new subarea P. Approval of a joint agreement by the county is necessary when the city proposes to exercise its urban renewal authority outside city limits, which is the case for this subarea P. Such an agreement would authorize the city council to pass any resolution or ordinance necessary to designate the property as an urban renewal area under Iowa Code Chapter 403. A joint agreement was brought to the county supervisors for review and approval at its October 11, 2021 regular meeting. The county supervisors approved the joint agreement by Resolution Number 21-246. The city will need to execute the joint agreement between subarea, so before subarea P can be added to the district. I concur with the recommendation and respectfully request mayor and city council approval.
Thank you, Mike. We are in a public hearing to consider city council approval of the joint agreement between the City of Dubuque and Dubuque County and approval of a resolution of adoption for the amended and restated urban renewal plan for the Dubuque Industrial Center Economic Development District, version 2021.6. Is there anyone in the chambers to address us on this? Seeing no one, do we have any virtual input?
There are no written comments on this item.
Okay.
And the city clerk has not received any emails.
Okay, thank you. I'll bring it back to the table for any discussion. Adrian, what you call the roll, please?
Kavanaugh.
Aye.
Rousell.
Aye.
Sprank.
Aye.
Farber.
Aye.
Resnick.
Aye.
Buell.
Aye.
Jones.
Aye.
That motion carries seven zero.
Public hearing number five is Chavanel Road Hike Bike Trail Phase Two.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Jones.
I move to receive and file the documents and approve the two resolutions.
Second by Sprank.
Motion by Mr. Jones, second by Mr. Sprank. Mike, please.
Thank you. City manager Mike Van Milligan. Sealed bids received for the Chavanel Road Hike Bike Trail Phase Two project. City engineer Gus Sojias recommends award of the contract to the low bidder Midwest Concrete Incorporated in the amount of $404,781.20, subject to the Iowa Department of Transportation approval. This amount is 10.6% under the estimate of probable cost. Phase one of the project was completed in May of 2020 and included improvements from Siple Road to Radford Road. Phase two of the project will include construction from Radford Road to the northwest arterial hike bike trail. This trail is anticipated to be constructed in the spring of 2022. I concur with the recommendation and respectfully request mayor and city council approval.
Thank you, Mike. We are in a public hearing to consider city council approval of the award of the Chavanel Road Hike Bike Trail Phase Two project and contract to the lower low bidder Midwest Concrete Inc. in the amount of $404,781.20, subject to Iowa DOT approval. Is there anyone in the chambers to address us on this? Do we have any virtual input?
We do not.
The city clerk has not received any emails.
Okay, thank you. I'll bring it back to the table for any discussion. Adrian, what you call the roll?
Kavanaugh.
Aye.
Rousell.
Aye.
Sprank.
Aye.
Farber.
Aye.
Resnick.
Aye.
Buell.
Aye.
Jones.
Aye.
That motion carries seven zero.
We will move on to public input. At this time, anyone participating in the meeting may address the city council on the action items on the agenda or on matters under the control of the city council. For all in-person attendees, please approach the podium and state your name and address. For all remote attendees, please enter your name and address in the chat function or state your name and address over the phone when the mayor asks if there is any virtual input. If more than one participant would like to speak, then city staff will determine the speaking order of the participants. Individual remarks are limited to five minutes, and the overall public input period is limited to 30 minutes. Under the Iowa Open Meetings Law, the city council can take no formal action on comments given during public input or that do not relate to the action items on the agenda.
Thank you, Adrian. Is there anyone in the chambers to address the council? Okay, seeing none. Is there anyone virtually?
There are no comments in the chat.
The city clerk has not received any emails.
Okay, thank you. We'll move on then to the action items.
Action item number one is Approval of 28E Agreement between the City of Dubuque, Dubuque County Conservation Board, Iowa Department of Natural Resources, and the Friends of the Mines of Spain.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Rousell, please.
I move to receive and file and approve.
Second by Sprank.
Motion by Ms. Rousell, second by Mr. Sprank. Mike, please.
Thank you. City manager Mike Van Milligan. Leisure services manager Marie Ware recommends city council approval of the 28E agreement between the City of Dubuque, Dubuque County Conservation Board, Iowa Department of Natural Resources, and the Friends of the Mines of Spain for the Mines of Spain Recreation Area and EB Lyons Interpretive Center. The 28E agreement outlines what each partner has committed to the partnership. The city currently has funding budgeted to cover the half the personnel and operating cost of the partnership outlined. The city would also take on capital costs related to the EB Lyons Interpretive Center and parking lots and would budget for capital improvements. The city owns the building and its improvements. In the agreement, the Dubuque County Conservation Board would have office space and full use of the building and all its contents. Dubuque County Conservation would hire and manage a full-time naturalist to be based out of the EB Lyons Interpretive Center and place one other full-time staff member at the center. This will increase the number of hours the center is open, as well as the interpretive nature programming both inside and outside the center. The budget for the center will be shared between the county and the city. The Dubuque County Conservation Board recently completed and adopted a comprehensive park master plan that included tremendous public input. Citizens weighed in on the importance of environmental education. The Dubuque County Conservation Board is also an expert at environmental education. This is an important component to this partnership. This partnership established in the 28E agreement helps to meet the vision, mission, guiding principles, and more of their newly adopted comprehensive plan. The Iowa Department of Natural Resources will continue to manage and maintain the over 1,400 acre park area in addition to the contiguous city-owned land with the state-funded budget recommended by the governor and approved by the legislature. The Iowa Department of Natural Resources will contribute $5,000 to the partnership each year. They will also provide staff assistance during peak programming, for instance, school field trip time, and a seasonal interpreter to work with the Dubuque County Conservation Board naturalists. The Friends of the Mines of Spain, a 501(c)(3) nonprofit, has been steadfast in the recruitment of volunteers and their fundraising efforts. If not for their commitment, the Interpretive Center would not have been built or remain open. They will continue with that support of both Mines of Spain and the center through this agreement. They will continue to fundraise as the nonprofit that supports both the Mines of Spain and the Interpretive Center. As a nonprofit, they can also apply for grants that at times are not available to government agencies. They will continue to promote volunteerism both inside the center and in the Mines of Spain Recreation Area for both the county and the state. They also are active in promotion of visitation to the Mines of Spain. An advisory board will be established of the partnership members to continue communications on topics such as marketing, volunteerism, future collaborations, and more. Communication has been and will be a key to success. Additional partnerships will continue to be pursued, like past summer camps offered by the University of Iowa at the center, the Outdoor Environmental Education Initiative with the Dubuque Community School District, and potential partnership with the National Mississippi River Museum and Aquarium. Numerous partners have come around the table in earnest since 2018 to build a new partnership. Four main partners have been working together, meeting after meeting, to be able to create an outline for a new partnership for the Mines of Spain Recreation Area and EB Lyons Interpretive Center. Those four partners are the State of Iowa Department of Natural Resources, Dubuque County Conservation Board, Friends of the Mines of Spain, and the City of Dubuque. At these meetings, the state IDNR was represented by then states park bureau chief Todd Kaufelt, district supervisor Detra Detman, park ranger Jason Gilmore, and park manager Ellie Leinberg. Dubuque County Conservation Director Brian Preston represented Dubuque County Conservation. Leisure services manager Marie Ware represented the city. Jennifer Tigas and Rudy Presko represented the Friends of the Mines of Spain. Other potential partners for the future include the National Mississippi River Museum and Aquarium, and they were represented by curator of conservation programs Jared McGovern. The Friends of the Mines of Spain approved the 28 agreement at their October 19, 2021 meeting. The Dubuque County Conservation Board approved the 28E agreement at their October 21, 2021 meeting, and the Dubuque County Board of Supervisors acted on the 28E agreement this morning and gave it approval, and of course, the city council's meeting tonight. The Natural Resource Commission is meeting on November 10, 2021, and will be acting upon the 28E agreement at that meeting. That meeting will conclude all the approvals needed. Since 2018, leisure services manager Marie Ware has worked very hard to put this partnership together to improve the customer experience and to fully utilize the available assets. I congratulate Marie on bringing this to a successful conclusion. I concur with the recommendation and respectfully request mayor and city council approval.
Thank you, Mike. Do we have any discussion?
Let me just say, wow. A lot of moving parts here. Congratulations to everybody, and thank you.
Absolutely. Okay, the motion is to receive and file and approve the 28E agreement. Adrian, what you call the roll, please?
Kavanaugh.
Aye.
Rousell.
Aye.
Sprank.
Aye.
Farber.
Aye.
Resnick.
Aye.
Buell.
Aye.
Jones.
Aye.
That motion carries seven zero.
Action item number two is Forgivable Loan Pilot Program to Incentivize Housing Creation in Central Avenue Corridor.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Sprank.
I suggest that we receive and file and approve this motion, so, or approve this program.
Second by Resnick.
Motion by Mr. Sprank, second by Mr. Resnick. Mike, please.
Thank you. City manager Mike Van Milligan. Economic development director Jill Connors recommends city council approval of a pilot program using no more than $200,000 of currently available funds in the downtown housing creation capital improvement program budget to incentivize the addition of quality affordable residential choices in the Central Avenue corridor. The pilot program would run from now through June 30, 2022. The incentive would be monetarily the same as the housing creation grant, or $10,000 per unit, but would provide more flexibility for eligibility of projects. It would be available for units that are currently occupied if the project meets the other project requirements, while simultaneously requiring a commitment to meet a $500,000 investment threshold to increase the neighborhood impact. This incentive would be in the form of a 10-year forgivable loan as opposed to a grant. This serves two purposes. One, the city benefits by continuing to control the outcome of the project for 10 years. And two, developers who choose to use certain state and federal tax credit programs benefit by not having the $10,000 unit reduce their cost bases for those programs, making the projects more financially feasible by being eligible for higher, higher levels of tax credit. I concur with the recommendation and respectfully request mayor and city council approval.
Thank you, Mike. Do we have any discussion? Mayor, Mr. Sprank.
I wish we could put another zero behind this. Seriously, this is, this is what we need to do. This is what I'm really happy to see happening. We know the Central Avenue corridor needs attention, and this is a great start to a, to a very long process, so, thank you.
You were just hoping one would add, not, you weren't gonna add one?
No, I was hoping, but, you know, I could, I could pray, right?
Right, absolutely. Any other comments? Adrian, what you call the roll, please?
Kavanaugh.
Aye.
Rousell.
Aye.
Sprank.
Aye.
Farber.
Aye.
Resnick.
Aye.
Buell.
Aye.
Jones.
Aye.
That motion carries seven zero.
Action item number three is Amending a Tax Increment Ordinance for the Dubuque Industrial Center Economic Development District as amended by version 2021.6 of the amended and restated plan.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Jones.
I move to receive and file the communications and further move that the requirement that a proposed ordinance be considered and voted on for passage to two council meetings prior to the meeting at which it is to be finally passed to be suspended.
Second by Farber.
Motion by Mr. Jones, second by Ms. Farber. Mike, please.
Thank you. City manager Mike Van Milligan. Economic development director Jill Connors recommends the city council adopting ordinance amending the most recent ordinance for the Dubuque Industrial Center Economic Development District as the district boundaries were amended by version 2021.6 of the amended and restated urban renewal plan. The primary goal of version 2021.6, the amended and restated plan, is to add additional property to the district. The proposed expansion includes 156.25 acres of property on the northwest quadrant of the intersection of the southwest arterial and Highway 15161. The property is also located only three miles from the Dubuque Regional Airport and near existing water and sanitary sewer infrastructure that was extended along the south side of Highway 61 to serve the airport. In order to reflect the changes to the district boundaries and subareas made by version 2021.6, the TIF ordinance area boundaries must also be amended. The proposed ordinance reflects the addition of the property as a new subarea P. I concur with the recommendation and respectfully request mayor and city council approval.
Thank you, Mike. Do we have any discussion? Adrian, what you call the roll, please?
Kavanaugh.
Aye.
Rousell.
Aye.
Sprank.
Aye.
Farber.
Aye.
Resnick.
Aye.
Buell.
Aye.
Jones.
Aye.
That motion carries seven zero.
Action item number four is Housing Commission Recommendation to Hold Quarterly Meetings.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Jones.
I move to receive and file the communications and further move that the requirement that a proposed ordinance be considered and voted on for passage to two council meetings prior to the meeting at which it is to be finally passed to be suspended.
Second by Resnick.
Motion by Mr. Jones, second by Mr. Resnick. Mike, do you have anything for this? I didn't say anything. Okay. Okay, any discussion? Adrian, what you call the roll, please?
Kavanaugh.
Aye.
Rousell.
Aye.
Sprank.
Aye.
Farber.
Aye.
Resnick.
Aye.
Buell.
Aye.
Jones.
Aye.
That motion carries seven zero.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Jones.
I move final consideration and passage of the ordinance.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Jones, second by Mr. Resnick. Adrian, what you call the roll, please?
Kavanaugh.
Aye.
Rousell.
Aye.
Sprank.
Aye.
Farber.
Aye.
Resnick.
Aye.
Buell.
Aye.
Jones.
Aye.
That motion carries seven zero.
Action item number five is Proposed Amendment to Master Agreement for Shared Use Projects Between the City of Dubuque and Kamalek Internet Services.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Kavanaugh.
I move to receive and file and approve. Action item number five is Proposed Amendment to Master Agreement for Shared Use Projects Between the City of Dubuque and Kamalek Internet Services.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Kavanaugh.
I move to receive and file and approve.
I'll second.
Is that Ms. Rousell? Okay. Motion by Mr. Kavanaugh, second by Ms. Rousell. Mike, please.
Thank you. City Manager Mike Van Milligan. Kamalek Internet Services is a locally owned and operated telecommunications and internet service provider. It's contemplating expansion of its high-speed internet service to southern portions of the community. Kamalek has expressed interest in collaborating with the City of Dubuque to accomplish this. In 2016, the City of Dubuque undertook its broadband acceleration initiative. The initiative focuses on public-private collaborations and includes a comprehensive strategy to reduce the cost and time required for broadband expansions in Dubuque. One effort within that strategy is the use of master sharing agreements, where an overall legal, structural, and financial relationship is established between the city and broadband providers and approved by the city council for co-location and fiber optic and conduit bills. Kamalek and the city entered into such a master agreement on April 1, 2019, and successfully completed several collaborations. These collaborations reduce Kamalek and city costs, accelerate fiber access and competition for citizens and businesses, while preserving city right-of-way and are consistent with the overall strategy of the city's initiative. Attached an amendment to the existing master agreement that will license to Kamalek excess city conduit capacity to reach its intended expansion area on and near Cedar Cross Road. Information Services Manager Chris Coleman, Civil Engineer Two Dave Ness, and Sustainable Innovation Consultant Dave Lyons recommend city council approval of an amendment to the master agreement for shared use projects with Kamalek Internet Services for a conduit collaboration to expand fiber services to the growing commercial and residential areas on and near Cedar Cross Road and facilitate fiber-to-the-home extensions. Approval of this request would have a positive budgetary impact to the city. Kamalek would be charged $87,500 for the license over a 20-year term. It would make annual payments beginning in 2021. The first payment would be $4,375, and each subsequent annual payment would be adjusted up 3% for inflation. I concur with the recommendation and respectfully request Mayor and City Council approval.
Thank you, Mike. Do we have any discussion? Adrian, which call the roll, please.
Kavanaugh.
Aye.
Rousell.
Aye.
Sprank.
Aye.
Farber.
Aye.
Resnick.
Aye.
Buell.
Aye.
Jones.
Aye.
That motion carries seven zero.
Public, I'm sorry. Action item number six is Eagle Point Water Treatment Plant Process and Condition Assessment Project 2021, Request for Execution of Professional Engineering Contract.
Mr. Mayor. I request we receive and file and approve.
Second. Motion.
Motion by Ms. Farber, second by Mr. Jones. Mike, please.
Thank you. City Manager Mike Van Milligan. The city received two responses for requests for engineering proposals for the Eagle Point Water Treatment Plant Process and Condition Assessment Project. The request for proposal included a requirement for the engineering firm to evaluate the major structural, mechanical, electrical, instrumentation, and control systems and processes associated with the Eagle Point Water Treatment Plant. Both firms were interviewed. Water Department Manager Chris Lester recommends city council approval of the selection of Strand Associates to complete the professional engineering services for the Eagle Point Water Treatment Plant Processing and Condition Assessment Project 2021, the amount of $187,093. Funding for the project will be from Water Plan Assessment Plan Budget Item and, as necessary, remaining project funds available from Kennedy Road Water Main Extension Project. I concur with the recommendation and respectfully request Mayor and City Council approval.
Thank you, Mike. Do we have any discussion?
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Resnick.
Just a quick question about the budget impact of your memo. It says that there's a reallocation of funds necessary. I was just wondering if this, does that indicate that this was kind of a surprise project that we weren't able to foresee, or is this pretty standard?
Yeah, I don't think it's a surprise. I think it's just, Chris, you want to answer? Chris Lester, the Water Department Manager is here.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and City Council. No, this project was not a surprise to us. It just ran a little bit higher than what we had budgeted for that CIP, so we, luckily the bids for the JFK Water Main Extension came back significantly lower than we anticipated, so we're going to have extra funds to devote to that. In the memo that you all received, we talked about breaking that down into two phases, but as you read, there was no significant benefit to doing that in two phases and delaying part of it. We just felt that there's a possible that certain items could be overlooked had we broken that down into two phases, so we're able to utilize those funds saved on the JFK Water Main Project to complete all of this in one, at one time, excuse me.
Great, so there's 100% funded from those two, from those different sources, so there's no real budget impact, just a change in the use of the funds?
Yes, that's correct.
Great, thank you very much.
You bet.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Any other comments? Question? Okay, thank you very much. Okay, Adrian, which call the roll, please.
Kavanaugh.
Aye.
Rousell.
Aye.
Sprank.
Aye.
Farber.
Aye.
Resnick.
Aye.
Buell.
Aye.
Jones.
Aye.
That motion carries seven zero.
Action item number seven is Citywide Water Distribution System Storage and Pumping Improvement Project 2021, Award of Professional Engineering Contract.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Resnick.
Yes, I move to receive and file and approve.
Second.
Second by Mr. Resnick, second by Mr. Sprank. Mike, please.
Thank you. City Manager Mike Van Milligan. The city received two responses to request for professional engineering proposals for the citywide water distribution system, storage, and pumping improvements. After review of the information provided by each firm and the innovation and initiative each firm would bring to the project, including an evaluation of the costs associated with the full scope of services, the selection committee recommends entering into a contract with Origin Design. Water Department Manager Chris Lester requests city council authorization to enter contract for professional engineering services with Origin Design of Dubuque for the Citywide Water Distribution System Storage and Pumping Improvements Project, the amount of $793,800. The City of Dubuque received notification from the Iowa Finance Authority on October 5, 2021, that its planning and design state revolving loan application was approved. The proposed engineering and design work will be funded in their entirety through the Iowa SRF Loan Program. I concur with the recommendation and respectfully request Mayor and City Council approval.
Thank you, Mike. Do we have any discussion? Adrian, which call the roll, please.
Kavanaugh.
Aye.
Rousell.
Aye.
Sprank.
Aye.
Farber.
Aye.
Resnick.
Aye.
Buell.
Aye.
Jones.
Aye.
That motion carries seven zero.
Action item number eight is East-West Corridor Capacity Improvements, Recommendation for Professional Consultant Services, Preliminary Engineering Design and Environmental Clearance Phase.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Jones.
Move to receive and file and approve.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Jones, second by Mr. Kavanaugh. Mike, please.
Thank you. City Manager Mike Van Milligan. Four responses were received in response to a request for proposals for a professional services consultant to complete the preliminary engineering design and environmental clearance phase to advance the development of the east-west corridor capacity improvements along University Avenue at the intersections of Loris Boulevard, Asbury Road, and Pennsylvania Avenue. The adopted east-west corridor connectivity study report has acted as the city's master plan for both short-term and long-term capacity improvements or corridor modifications to support growing east-west traffic flow in the city. The study included recommended improvements supporting complete street concepts, multimodal transportation, vehicle, pedestrian, bicycle, and recreational improvements. The report included 32 proposed capacity improvement projects along the four corridors. Capacity improvements identified include a series of intersection realignments, intersection improvements, turn lane additions, add traffic signal interconnect, and intelligent transportation or ITS improvements along each corridor. With funds currently programmed in fiscal year 2022, the next steps in the design development process is to begin the preliminary engineering and environmental study phase for intersection capacity improvements along the University Avenue, Loris Boulevard, the Pennsylvania Avenue overlap section. The preliminary engineering phase is anticipated to take approximately 12 months to complete. Once the preliminary engineering and environmental study are completed, corridor impacts will be identified and property acquisition could begin, which is anticipated to take approximately two years to complete. Once property acquisition is completed within the overlap section, construction to convert the three intersections along University Avenue to roundabouts could take approximately two to three years to complete. Assistant City Manager, I'm sorry, Assistant City Engineer Bob Schisel and the Consultant Selection Committee recommend city council approval of the selection of HDR as the consultant to complete the preliminary engineering design and environmental clearance phase to advance the development of the east-west corridor capacity improvements along University Avenue at the intersections at Loris Boulevard, Asbury Road, and Pennsylvania Avenue, and request authorization for the city engineer to initiate contract negotiations. I concur with the recommendation and respectfully request Mayor and City Council approval.
Thank you, Mike. Do we have any discussion? Mr. Kavanaugh?
Yeah, first I want to congratulate Bob Schisel on his promotion, so that's great news for tonight. So, secondly, though, the serious question here is the timeline. So, I understand, and it's written out pretty clearly here, that the timeline's going to take about 12 months to do this engineering phase, and two to three years to complete altogether, with two years about in there of property acquisition. I mean, one of the things I've heard from a lot of neighbors in this area is just the frustration with this, you know, that we've been talking about this for so long, and it's coming, and it sounds like you guys have had a lot, and the engineering department have had a lot of conversations with the neighbors there, so, is this, I guess my question is, is this pretty similar to what we had when we did the other two roundabouts in that corridor? Is that timeline pretty similar? Is there anything that could speed this up, or is this just basically what we're working with here?
I'm going to let Assistant City Engineer Bob Schisel answer the question, but first I'll remind you that it took the southwest, 30 years to do the southwest arterial, and we're going to beat that by a long way.
Sure. Yeah.
Good evening, Assistant City Engineer Bob Schisel. The schedules that we have outlined are preliminary at this point, and they will be refined as we, as we work through the design development of the project. Once we get, after the next 12 months, after we get done with the preliminary design and the environmental phase, as we mentioned, we'll begin property acquisition. We're estimating that it's going to take two years because there, high probability there's going to be acquisitions, relocations, potentially business impacts, so, to, to actually go through the acquisition process, to acquire, and then work with those people to relocate and move and find a different, it's just gonna, it's going to take some time, and obviously, we'll do it as quickly as we can, but, but right now, that's, you know, that's kind of the planning level schedule right now.
All right. Well, thank you for that answer. I appreciate that. I think it just, it's been a lot of, a lot of people asking about it, so I think that's good that we have that information, and it's exciting to see this move forward. I'm glad that we're going to be going in this direction, so, thank you.
Mr. Mayor.
Ms. Farber.
I have a question about the intersection realignments that are potentially part of this redesign, and in particular, I'm looking at the University and Delhi intersection, which, as you may know, is just a, kind of like a TY unrestricted flow of traffic that really does cause a lot of accidents on a somewhat regular basis. And I was out and about over the weekend, and I took a look at the Clark Drive and Locust intersection, right on opposite Dubuque Senior High. So, when they redid that build-out, they actually put a green space, kind of like a triangle, green space on the Locust side, so that when you wanted to turn onto Clark, there was actually a lane with a little turn arrow in it, and it avoided people not knowing which flow of traffic was coming in which direction. And I was just wondering if food for thought could be that we could take a look at that intersection right there by University and Delhi, because it is quite dangerous.
Yeah, we would be happy to look at that. That was identified as one of the, one of the 32 improvements along the east-west corridor. It's just not included in this particular segment that we're, that we're looking at right now through this consultant services. When we get into it, I mean, there is a potential, when we start looking at traffic volumes and they go through the traffic analysis stage, you know, that's something that, that could come up in our discussions, but...
So, if you remember when we had my introduction to your group, and we actually sat and looked at that intersection, you can see that it's just kind of wide-open space.
Yep.
Kind of like, you know, a territory where people don't understand who's turning left, who's turning right, who's going straight, and it is quite hazardous.
Yeah, we do, you know, we do have that, that particular intersection on our radar, and it is identified as, as one that we need to, to look at and address as part of the, some of these, you know, long-term capacity improvements through the corridor. There's no, no question.
All right, well, thank you. I just think, you know, we're doing improvements, it might just be easy to add it to that intersection. Okay, thank you.
Sure. Mr. South, please.
I also have a question somewhat similar to Mr. Kavanaugh's question. I've also heard from homeowners in the area, and I'm just wondering, how does that interaction look like? I mean, what should homeowners be looking for when, when it comes time for them to ask their questions? Are there, do we have meetings? Do we send letters? Or how does that communication work?
We plan to do all the above. So, I personally believe, you know, and also the consultants, and I think other city staff also believe that the, the engineering design component of this initial phase is important, but the actual public engagement, public outreach component is equally is important. So, that was really stressed heavily in the RFP process, and the consultants and HDR proposed kind of a very robust public outreach, public engagement program. So, we will, we will formulate that plan as we develop our scope of work with them, but the thought is, is that we will hold several public informational meetings, kind of like open house sessions, where people can, can come and, and review the project and, and see what, what, what work we're developing and what we're proposing, and get input and feedback. We're also absolutely not opposed to going and meeting individually with, with property owners if, if need be. It's, there's nothing off the table at this point. Again, we plan to, it's, it's extremely hard. It's very important for the success of this project to have a very open, engaging, public involvement process, and it's truly my hope as, as citizens, property owners engage with us through this process, that at the end of the next 12 months, that there really shouldn't be any surprises to anybody, because we're going to show everybody the design, the development, you know, what the potential property, property impacts are as we, as we go through the process, so...
I appreciate hearing that, because I, communication is just so important, and it's equally important for the homeowners to be able to be proactive, as it is for the city to be proactive. So, thank you very much. I think that robust communication will pay big dividends. Thank you.
Yeah, it can't happen any other way.
Mr. Resnick.
Yeah, thank you. First of all, I think things do take longer nowadays, so I think the City of Dubuque and previous councils have made this a priority years ago. So, we started early before it gets, before it gets really bad in there, so I'm glad that we're doing this. It does take time to do it right. We're not going to rush this, and it hasn't reached the critical stage of where, why didn't they, why doesn't this happen right away? We need it right away. So, I applaud the city staff continuing to bear down on this project, and it's, it's going to be great, but it does take time, and I'm glad we started early. My question to you is, I know that in one of the roundabouts, we got, we got several awards for that, monetary awards. We got a safety award and an air quality award. Are we going to plan to again do some grant applications for these, for these improvements as well?
That is definitely a possibility, once we get, again, further along and get the, get the, the designs refined. I, I do believe that, that there's a strong possibility that these would qualify for potentially a clean air attainment grant or a traffic safety grant. You know, we'll, we'll definitely be looking at all those options as the project develops, but, you know, right now at this stage, we don't have enough information to be able[1758.21]
All right, thank you. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Anyone else? Okay, thank you very much, Bob, for that information. The motion is to receive and file and approve the selection of HDR Inc. as the consultant. Adrian, would you call the roll, please?
Kavanaugh.
Aye.
Rousell.
Aye.
Sprank.
Aye.
Farber.
Aye.
Resnick.
Aye.
Buell.
Aye.
Jones.
Aye.
That motion carries seven zero.
Action item number nine is Excellence on the Waterfront Honor Award for the Bee Branch Creek Restoration Project.
Mr. Mayor. I move to receive and file.
Second by Farber.
Motion by Ms. Rousell, second by Mr. Sprank. Mike, please.
Thank you. City Manager Mike Van Milligan. The city of Dubuque received a 2021 Excellence on the Waterfront Honor Award from the Waterfront Center for the Bee Branch Creek Restoration Project. City Dubuque Civil Engineer Darren Mearing and Project Manager Steve Sampson-Brown accepted the award during a virtual event on October 26th. Dubuque was one of eight award winners from across the world, including projects in Canada, United Kingdom, China, India, and the U.S. cities, including Genoa, Seattle, and Lewis County, Washington. An interdisciplinary jury, 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 excuse me, of professional planners, designers, city officials, and community business and development representatives determined the awards using criteria such as sensitivity of the design to water, quality and harmony of design, civic contribution, environmental values, overall cultural richness of the community, and degree of difficulty. And Civil Engineer Darren Mearing is here tonight to say a few words. And Darren is the one that leads this project for the city of Dubuque in partnership with the project manager Steve Sampson-Brown.
Thank you, Mike.
Evening, Mayor and City Council members. Civil Engineer Darren Mearing. The Excellence on the Waterfront Award program began in 1987, and it was started to recognize top-quality planning, design, and development work on the waterfront. And the Waterfront Center, who grants the award, they're known as an independent institution, and the judgments rendered by the award juries have been seen as unbiased and recognition based solely on merit. You know, the projects are judged by the six criteria that the city manager just went over, but they've been increasingly sought after over the years. In fact, and, and then actually going more international, in 2012, seven of the 10 award recipients were actually outside the United States. And this year, the award recipients once again spanned the globe from Seattle to London, from Juneau to Inner Mongolia, China, from China to Dubuque. The Bee Branch Creek has won several awards on the local, state, and national level. This latest award is special because it reflects the fact that city's efforts really are communities' collective efforts to resurrect and restore the once-buried Bee Branch Creek is now known, maybe not wildly, but known throughout the world. So last Tuesday evening, City Project Manager Steve Sampson-Brown and I had the honor of accepting this prestigious Excellence on the Waterfront Award on behalf of the entire Dubuque community. Congratulations, city staff. Congratulations, city council members. Congratulations, mayor. Congratulations, Dubuque.
Thank you, Darren, for all you and Bob have done. I know this, that project is recognized all over this country, and I know internationally there's been talk of it as well, as a best practice, so probably hear from, from a lot of folks a lot more about how we did it, and, yeah, thank you.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, Mr. Jones?
Reference to the previous item, too. This is the same engineering department that got a lot of attention for the extraordinary public engagement and partnerships and conversation as we went from the conversation about the big ditch to the gorgeous Bee Branch Greenway and Waterway. So I, I think you look for some robust engagement with the citizens on the, on the east-west corridor project that will satisfy everybody. Congratulations again.
Anyone have any questions, comments? Okay, the motion is to receive and file. Adrian, would you call the roll, please?
Kavanaugh.
Aye.
Rousell.
Aye.
Sprank.
Aye.
Farber.
Aye.
Resnick.
Aye.
Buell.
Aye.
Jones.
Aye.
That motion carries seven zero.
Action item number 10 is Sustainable Dubuque Public Information Brochure.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Kavanaugh.
Moves to receive and file.
Second.
Second by Mr. Kavanaugh, second by Mr. Sprank. Mike, did you have anything to?
No.
Nothing to add to this? Okay. Any other comments? Adrian, would you call the roll, please?
Kavanaugh.
Aye.
Rousell.
Aye.
Sprank.
Aye.
Farber.
Aye.
Resnick.
Aye.
Buell.
Aye.
Jones.
Aye.
That motion carries seven zero.
Next are council member reports.
Okay, and I'll make a quick report because there are five of the seven of us that are on the ballot tomorrow. There's a big election, school board, city council, so I'm sure there, hopefully, there'll be a good turnout, but I wanted to remind citizens of that, and if they haven't voted, tomorrow is the day. Anyone have a council member report?
I do want to report that I was recently at a banquet for an unusual but cherished organization. It was the 40th anniversary for ADCA. You might not know what that is, but that's the All-Dubuque Croquet Association. And it was, and I'm not the only one on, at this table who was there. Ms. Freyfelder was also there. But I, I just wanted to say that 40, 40 years, it was founded by Norm Frohn, he was a professor emeritus at Clark University. It's this kind of activity that when we're new in town, people reach out, and it really makes Dubuque a special place. So we, I, we experience neighborliness from this group and friendly competition, and it really helped us put the home in our hometown. These organizations are, fly under the radar throughout the city, but Dubuque has many of these organizations like this. Well, not like this, let me tell you, though. This is a unique group, but very much appreciated, and I just thought that was a significant anniversary, 40, 40 years.
Very good. Anyone else have any reports? Okay. I hope citizens get out tomorrow and vote. There be no further business on the agenda. We stand adjourned.
Thank you.